My name is Kim Mayvon. I am the board chair for the Corona Chamber of Commerce and also owner of Creative by Design. Today is a great day. We've got some important updates ahead, so we appreciate you taking your time to join us today. I'll be sharing the agenda with our 2020 board chair, Don Williamson.
Thank you, Kim. Good morning, everyone. Today's event is sponsored by Creative by Design. And as you just heard our chairman say, she is in fact the owner of Creative by Design. Creative by Design has been offering creative services since 1996, and they're celebrating 25 years in business this month. They provide graphic design services for logos, brochures, flyers, and other marketing items as well as web design specializing in World Press. They also provide printing services and promotional products. Thank you to Creative by Design for generously sponsoring this meeting. And you can see Kim and Creative by Design's work all over the Corona Chamber of Commerce. They do a fantastic job and come highly recommended. Kim, back to you.
Thank you, Donnie. As a reminder to please use the chat button to ask any questions. You send your questions to chamber host and we will verbally ask the questions at the appropriate time. Before we get started, we would like to wish Councilmember Steiner a happy birthday. Please play the video.
Hey, happy birthday! Happy birthday! Yes, to you! Hold up. Who? You, Jim, that's who. Happy birthday!
Thanks Shaq and Kim and everybody. I appreciate it. Four years away from 60.
You're such a youngster.
Oh, I sure don't feel it. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Well, happy birthday. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our first speaker. Corona City Council has five elected positions. Each council member is assigned to a district award. Each of these members are elected by their geographical location. But though they are elected by their district, once elected, they serve the entire city population. Today, we have invited Corona Councilmember of District Four, Jim Steiner. He has been an active member of Corona community advocating on behalf of underprivileged kids and children struggling with illness. Councilmember Steiner was elected to Corona City Council in November of 2018. Today, he will be sharing about what is going on in the downtown area, including the skyline development. Please welcome Councilmember Steiner.
Well, thank you so much, everybody. It's great to be here with you today. Stephanie, are you on? Do you have the slides you can put up? So when Bobby asked me, you know, if I could go over a few things, one of the, or a few of the things that I had mentioned, that he mentioned were economic development, homeless, I'll touch on cannabis, maybe skyline, just to, you know, highlight some of the things going on. So Stephanie, if you want to go to the next slide. All right. So I'm pleased to share with you some exciting efforts to support more than the 12,000 businesses in Corona. We have upcoming strategic plans to grow our economy, training to support our entrepreneurs and manufacturers, and marketing tools to celebrate our businesses. And I'll let you look at that slide there for just a second. Okay, Steph? Okay, last Wednesday, the Corona City Council approved professional services agreements to support the city in developing strategic plans for our downtown and throughout Corona. The creation of these plans will be a partnership with our community as we hold workshops and have digital platforms inviting input from our residents and businesses. Through a combination of community feedback and market research, the downtown revitalization plan will result in a mix of commercial uses for our downtown that celebrates what makes Corona unique and serves as a gathering place and regional destination. The economic development strategic plan will be informed by conversations with businesses and aspiring entrepreneurs to understand the resources they need to grow and sustain their operations. Let's see, it will also include market data to help attract, help us attract the right mix of businesses that pay higher livable wages so that our residents have accessibility, or have access to quality, well-paying jobs. And stay tuned for ways to participate in the development of these plans as you can help shape the direction of Corona's downtown and future business support programs. Steph? Okay, in January, we launched the Corona Manufacturing Assistance Program, a multi-agency program, partnership program to support more than 400 manufacturers in our community. Through this effort and our partners, including the Corona Chamber of Commerce, we provide training, workshops, individual meetings, and access to hiring and training resources. Currently, we are inviting Corona manufacturers to complete our needs assessment survey and share feedback on how we can support their operations. The survey can be completed on our city website. And we invite all manufacturers to complete the survey and join us on May 25th for our manufacturing industry roundtable. In the final slide on this, I'm pleased to share that our city team is hard at work in developing a shop, dine, and hire marketing program to promote our eateries, businesses, and services of the many businesses that call Corona home. Working with our partners, we will launch an app that allows users to find where to shop and dine in Corona, access business promotions, and also connects job seekers with Corona jobs. Our goal is to keep our economy strong by shopping, dining, and hiring in Corona. Make sure you subscribe to our monthly economic development newsletter accessible through our city website to stay informed on these initiatives and how you can participate. On the Corona Mall, a quick note on that. The city's interdepartmental team is meeting with the developer on a frequent basis to guide them through a streamlined process for upcoming improvements that can attract future tenants. With the pandemic, many retailers, including those that were in conversations with the lab right before the pandemic hit, have been hesitant to enter into new leases. However, as the reopening continues and restaurants are now permitted at 50% indoor capacity, the developer is hopeful that tenants will resume their interest. The downtown revitalization plan also will identify strategies to attract and support entrepreneurs and unique businesses to our downtown. And all this information was provided by our incredible Economic Development Director, Jessica Gonzalez. She is an absolute rock star, and we are just so grateful that we were able to hire her. And like I mentioned in the State of the City address last year, it's my goal, and I believe the goal of the entire council, to have a very powerful, robust economic development department. And we are well on our way to achieving that. So that's pretty exciting. Why don't I go through the few things and then at the end, you can, whoever has some questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Okay, homelessness, a joyful subject. One that has no solutions. I think everybody realizes that, but there's things we can do as a city to manage what we do have going on in order to do our best to not only help those that are in need of it, but also to support our citizens and our business community to try to ensure that, you know, the the homeless aren't having a negative impact, especially on our business owners. So let's see, July, July of 19, we entered into a contract with Path of Life in order to provide some beds so we could not only help people, but also that will allow us to enforce our anti-camping laws. And I think you're all aware by now of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision that said, in order to move somebody up, in order to move a homeless person off public property, you have to offer them a bed in a shelter with services for their particular needs, case management, things like that. We obviously didn't have a shelter. So we came up with that idea of renting those beds at Path of Life and were able to remove all the structures that were were put up at City Park primarily. We couldn't necessarily kick them out of the park, just like we couldn't kick any citizen out of the park, but we can certainly enforce encampments. In November of 2019, we hired our homeless solutions manager. I think most of you know Karen Roper by now. She's another one of those just superstar professionals that, this isn't her first rodeo, she's done it all. In January of 2020, we launched the City of Corona Motel Emergency Shelter Program, which provides 20 rooms of motel emergency shelter per night. That is primarily for women and children and families, and those 20 homes are booked every single night, or 20 rooms. On April 2020, the city adopted a shelter crisis declaration. Also in April, we secured the city's first ever Continuum of Care grant, and that was $65,000. That kind of opened the door for us for some other funding. The city adopted a comprehensive strategic plan, homeless strategic plan in June of 2020. Also in June, our homeless solutions manager, Karen, was elected as vice chair of the Continuum of Care. And this is huge, guys. And in less than a year, she's second in charge now at the Continuum of Care as vice chair. She's also got, just elected to the Chair of the Policy Committee, I think it is, on the Continuum of Care. So we have somebody on the inside now, way up there. And so that's going to benefit us a lot. And also in June of 2020, the city council approved a $3.4 million Phase One Homeless Solution Action Plan, which consists of a year-round emergency shelter navigation center, year-round motel voucher emergency shelter program, repurposed city-owned 12 housing units for permanent supportive housing. That's over there by Lincoln and D Street area. Tenant-based rental agreement assistance program for housing placements, expansion of our Corona Police Department Halt Team from two to four officers. So we got two teams now. So what was happening a lot is the homeless would know that the whole team's schedule, and as soon as they were off for three days, they would put their tents up. So now we have basically coverage every day of the week. And we expanded our CityNet street outreach and case management services. The shelter that, we'll all get to that in a second. In October of 2020, the City of Corona issued an RFP for a city-owned 4.82-acre site for multifamily, low, very low affordable, very low-income affordable housing, which will include permanent supportive housing for the homeless. In November of 2020, the city council approved a $1 million construction contract for the Harrison Shelter Navigation Center. April 21, April 2021 is the target date for the completion of the construction with the goal to open the shelter in late 2021. We have to go out for the RFP and get an operator. In January of '21, we executed the state PLHA grant agreement of $582,000 to support fiscal year 2022 operation of the Harrison Shelter slash Navigation Center. The grant will provide 59% of shelter operating costs and $3.4 million for Corona homeless shelter services over five years. And this shelter on Harrison is 30 beds. It's chronic, for chronically homeless men only, which is, you know, the biggest problem, I think, for all of us, you know, the, those that, that are really reluctant to accept services. In January, or January to March of 2021, we launched the Make It Cozy Warehouse Partnership with CityNet, faith-based communities, businesses, and residents. Programs use city-owned building to provide warehouse space for donated furniture, moving kits, and other supplies for homeless clients graduating from the shelter and moving into permanent housing. And April of 2021, we approved an MOU and launched a partnership with the City of Norco to expand outreach, engagement, and motel emergency shelter services to serve Norco homeless in the City of Norco. Basically, that is, instead of for them going out for an RFP, we're basically allowing them to use CityNet with, for a cost, and they're paying us admin fees, but CityNet will go to the streets of Norco a certain number of hours a week, engage with the homeless, and then offer them services in Norco motels. We will not be taking on Norco homeless into Corona motels. But this is all part of our strategic plan and creating these sub-regional partnerships. It's critical that everybody has, every city has skin in the game. You know, we don't want to end up like Santa Ana or Riverside, to be honest. So if everybody in their own cities are doing something to handle their homelessness, that's exactly what's needed. I'll be keeping very close eye on the shelter. It was designed, the whole program was designed in a way to not be, not draw homeless from other communities. It's a referral-based only through CityNet or RPD. It's for Corona-area homeless only. So it's, you know, it's not going to solve anything, but it's going to help between the shelter, our motel vouchers, our permanent supportive housing units, our Path of Life beds. You know, you're looking at roughly 75 people a day that you're keeping off the streets. So hopefully, you know, that will just, you know, grow some legs. The community's all around us. I think that our strategic plan is a model for any city, anywhere. It's incredible. I think with Norco coming on board and Riverside being so engaged, that Western Riverside County really is setting the stage of leadership on this topic in our region. Cannabis, real quick, the city will start accepting commercial cannabis permits applications on Monday, April 19. So we're finally there. After a couple of years of discussion, the city will close the application period for storefront cannabis businesses on Tuesday, May 18, that's 6:00 PM unless the deadline is extended by the city manager or designate. The city has posted application forms on the commercial cannabis permit portal on our website. I encourage you to check that out and has, our portal in general has just a lot of, has all the information that you really need to know. You can contact Associate Planner Jason Wasmund if you require assistance obtaining applications forms. He can be reached at jason.wasmund@corona.ca.gov, or you can simply call him at 951-736-2437. That's pretty, oh, and then on your agenda, did mention, I was going to bring up Skyline. I'm really excited about Skyline. While it isn't necessarily a direct relationship with business, there potentially are going to be some economic opportunities in that area that could kind of feed off the hundreds and thousands of people that, that come from within the city and outside the city to enjoy our trail system. You know, obviously, with more people in town, the more likely they are to frequent our businesses and learn just how great Corona really is. So with that, I will turn it over to Kim. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best. You know, we have experts that oversee each one of these areas, and I tend to try not to act like an expert when I'm not. So nothing else, we'll make sure we get you in touch with the right person.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Steiner. Anthony, do we have any questions for him?
Yes, we actually have a plethora of questions today. The first being, will the manufacturing needs assessment survey be made public? Norco College is interested in assessing how we may assist our local manufacturers.
I believe it'll be made public. Let me, let me just double check real quick, see if I have some more notes on that.
Councilmember, I'm happy to address that question as well.
Jessica, is that you? Thank God! Yes, ma'am. It's all yours.
Okay.
Jessica, you just made his birthday so much better. Go ahead, Jessica.
Absolutely. So yes, the survey is public. It is on our website. And we're happy to share that we have been working with Norco College, with Riverside Community College District, California Manufacturing Technology Consulting, workforce development for the county, and of course, our Corona Chamber. So they all have been able to participate in helping inform the survey questions, and we will be sending it out via their platforms. I know the chamber just sent an email blast promoting and encouraging folks to participate. So absolutely, we are, we're glad to have all the partners contributing, and this is public.
Thanks, Jessica. Don't go anywhere. What's next, Kim?
The next question is, Councilmember Steiner, if you could select a great business to locate in the downtown, what would it be? Whether your desires of the variety of shops to be there?
If I could select a specific, you know what, this is, this isn't my area of specialty. I mean, there's, there's plenty of restaurants and things that I love that I wish were in Corona. And if you want to know what those are, it's Wahoo's, it's, of course, Panera's in Corona, but I wish there was one closer. I wish we had an Olive Garden in town. You know, and as far as businesses, I just want things, things to do, fun things to do. I want, I want to be able to go places and hang out with you, you know, our residents, and just chill and have a beer, listen to music, and enjoy the, just enjoy the camaraderie of a community. You know, because it, it just really helps to get to know people and, and it's a good vibe. So I'm not going to say specifically, I'll leave that up to the experts, but I, I want quality-of-life things to do for myself and my family and, and the items that I mentioned.
Next question is, can vendors interested in these projects attend meetings with the developer and city managers?
I think that we always encourage our business leaders to be part of the discussion. Jessica, do you have any further on that?
Sure. So absolutely, community engagement is going to be a critical piece in developing these plans. And so we are hoping everyone will stay tuned. We'll have the information on our website and our newsletter shared with the chamber, so the chamber can also help us get the word out. But there will be plenty of opportunities to participate, whether in person or digital, or virtual platforms to make sure that our vendors, our businesses, stakeholders in general, our residents and businesses can share their input and can help us to shape these plans.
Sounds good. The next question is regarding homelessness. Homelessness is a statewide challenge, perhaps even nationally. How will Corona be able to position itself so we do not become the magnet for attracting more from other communities?
Well, you know, that's why we designed the shelter the way we did. When Yolanda Creo and I were assigned to the homeless, homeless solutions committee, we went on a tour of Southern California, different homeless shelters from Coachella Valley to Orange County and everything in between. And we learned what type of shelter attracts people from the outside and what doesn't. And it, good example is, you know, when the Orange County Rescue Mission was running the shelter, where we're going to be, the building that we're going to take over, did anybody know that was a shelter? Nobody did. And it's because it wasn't, it was referral-based only. It was, there was no walk-up allowed, no loitering allowed. You can't just come and pop in for a real. So one of the reasons I'm going to be running for reelection is to ensure that this doesn't happen. And if any of the policies that we put in place attracts homeless from other communities, then I will be the first to lead to eliminate that program and go back to the way it was. If it was better the way, the way it was before, then we'll go back to it. But I really think the answer is putting the right model in place, showing some leadership to neighboring communities. Don't you think Eastvale and Hrupa Valley, when they see Corona, Riverside, Norco are all stepping up? That's going to apply some pressure for them to, to do something similar. And I would anticipate that they're going to be reaching out to Karen Roper, asking for a copy of our strategic plan, asking for guidance, maybe even offering to hire her additionally for something else. So I feel really good about what we've put in place. That is not going to add to the problem. But you know what, it's, it's, it's never going to be solved. We're going to have a shelter, we're going to have, we're going to have beds, we're going to have permanent supportive housing. And like I said, we're going to be able to get about 75 people off the street. But there's still going to be a couple hundred on the street. And most of the homeless don't want services or won't accept services because whatever reason. You know, but we still will be helping a lot of people, and we got to, we got to remember that. And don't forget, you know, I think the last, last count, the McKinney-Bento count of the school district in Corona, I think it, don't quote me, but I think it was like 120 kids were determined to be homeless. That's horrible. So like I said, I feel good about it, but if I'm going to be around, hopefully, to ensure that we're addressing any of the unintended consequences.
Speaking of the shelter, last council meeting, someone mentioned the request to name the shelter. Is there still time to submit? And if so, who do we send our recommendations to?
Yeah, that was actually me that brought it up. And I felt like, you know, this would be a meaningful community engagement. I didn't want it to be Harrison Shelter. I don't want a big sign out front that says homeless shelter. I want, I want something, you know, loving and peaceful and something that the community came up with. And as far as who to contact, this is going to be, this will be, there'll be communication on this. There's plenty of time, of course. We haven't even started the process yet. But you'll likely see communication through the city's communication department on, on what, how to be involved with naming the shelter.
Thank you. And we have two more questions. If you can answer these really quickly. Can you share what you and the council did in purchasing the land for Skyline?
Sure. So there was, when we, when we hired our city manager, we told him that one of our goals was preserving some open space and having a robust trail system. I mean, think about it, guys. We got the Cleveland, we got Santa Ana River Trail, we got the Prado Basin, we got Chino State Park. We're surrounded by just an incredible amount of trails. And so as I stated, that was our, that's what we expected our city manager, one of the things for him to do. And so he actually approached the council and said there was an opportunity to purchase 228 acres off of Skyline on both sides of the Skyline access road. To basically start it just after the gate, if you're familiar with the area. And that area or that property was, or that entire property was owned by 16 or 17 different property owners. And so we, we had a depraise and we made an offer and we were able to purchase it. Well, so I reached out then to John Dustin of Nolton Communities, who was in the process of partnering with a developer to build 60 homes on the, in the meadow there. I don't know if you know, right before you get to the gate, if you look off to the left, you have 60 acres, beautiful meadow, flat, very popular area. And I was going to have 60 houses on it, encroaching into our forest even more in our open space and our trails. It was going to block off Hagador Canyon, it was going to block off Skinsuit. We were, we were, we had a solution to get to Hagador just by doing a walking bridge. But I asked the developer, I said, hey, you know, where are you at? What's going on? And he told me, and I says, you know, would you be interested in selling that 60 acres back to the city? And he said, maybe, you know, if the price is right. And so we, we had a depraise, they had a depraise. We met in the middle. And so all in all, we were able to buy 292 acres of land to preserve for open space. And I'm excited about that area. You know, there's some challenges in the sense that you don't want to do anything that's going to, you know, be a big shock to the Orchard Glen community. So we'll take that into consideration for sure. But we have 292 acres that we can, I say develop, but develop as a recreational, open space, trail system. you know, and opportunities for potential economic development, or yeah, economic development, but with some development that's going to be going in, likely going to be going in the area that's going to create business opportunities for that development. I mean, it's gold. I would love to have a business in the proposed Skyline Village, should that be approved by council.
Thank you. And last question, will there be a July 4th celebration this year and a parade?
So we're putting together the plan to do that with backup plans, just in case something goes south on us.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Steiner. There are no further questions.
All right, guys, thank you so much for having me. And I really appreciate all the birthday wishes in the chat box. And of course, Shaq, you know, that was so cool of him. He's my buddy, you know, we go back a long way. Anyway, thanks a lot, guys. I'll hang on for the rest of the meeting in case there's anything else. But look, I'm happy to be back on a call with you.
Thank you again, Councilman Steiner, and thank you, Anthony. Donnie, what else we got going on?
Well, thank you, Kim, and good job, Jim. I'm excited to announce that the speaker for our May 10th Coffee with an Entrepreneur will be Crystal Lopez. Crystal's on this call this morning. Crystal is the founder and owner of Carter Bradley Insurance Solutions, an agency offering wide-ranging, comprehensive insurance coverages. Crystal's emphasis is on providing solutions to protect families financially, especially their children during the most trying and often unexpected situations. Sadly, at the age of 17, Crystal lost her father to a drunk driver. So the mental, emotional, and financial avalanche of this event was devastating. And so she understands the needs of people in that situation. Through her hard work and determination, she used her loss as a motivation to help other families avoid those hardships, like the one she went through. We are really pleased to have her with us and look forward to hearing more of her story. Coffee with an Entrepreneur is offered for free through our partnership with the City of Corona and the Corona Chamber of Commerce. Please register today by using the link on this screen. Back to you, Kim.
Thank you, Don. I know I'm looking forward to that myself. All right, please welcome our president and CEO, Bobby Spiegel.
Well, thank you so much, Kim. Thank you to everyone. And Jim, happy birthday to you, big boy. Excellent job that you did for us today. We really appreciate all of you, you especially, and all the council members for taking time each week to give us updates and perspectives on things. As you all know, Governor Newsom has released the statement with the anticipation of June 15th to reopen California. We have been really promoting and working with the County of Riverside, and we have been waiting for these words from the governor. There are some guidelines, and we are working diligently to figure out the best way to be able to do all the different things that we want to offer to our members and to help our businesses succeed. A couple of things that are mandatory, that are still mandatory, are the masks and also, you know, common sense to be washing your hands and the different things with the sanitizers. So it's pretty exciting. You'll see on the slide, we have available wall supply lasts. We've got free masks and we've got free sanitizer. So if you would like to connect with the Chamber, these are a partnership with the County of Riverside and the Chamber of Commerce. The masks are the free masks that are one-time use. You see the sanitizers on the screen right now, 16.9 fluid ounce bottles. There's 15 in a case. And, you know, we would like to get those out to all of you. Again, these are not for resale. These are for your own use. We're hopeful that you will utilize them, and it keeps you not having to spend money on those items. The next thing that I wanted to do was mention that, you know, the theme this year that Kim picked was creating vision. And it started off with so many great things, and we're going to continue through the year. But the month of April has been selected by the County of Riverside as Innovation Month. And we're halfway through the month, and there's been so much that's been done so far, but there's a lot more happening. As you know, that most recently, we held our regional fast pitch competition in partnership with the City of Corona. We heard some really great pitches. There were eight different opportunities in there. Those fast pitches are similar to like the Shark Tank. And we have made our selection, and we are actually going to announce who the top three winners are at our Good Morning Corona Breakfast this coming up Friday. The winner from this competition will be sent on to the county finale, where they'll receive, possibly if they win, $10,000. But on a local level, I just want to give a shout out to the Board of Directors. Individually, they made donations up to what ended up being a collection of $1,750 for our local competitors. So the top one will be receiving $1,000, then a 500 for the second place, and 250 for the third place. And all this is going to be announced this Friday at our Good Morning Corona Breakfast. And that will be held over at the IHOP. It's an outdoor seating arrangement, again, following all guidelines. And you're going to hear some additional things besides the innovation pitches and the recap on that. There'll be business tips from Barry E. Knight. The networking tools will be also involved. And I think I skipped a video, did I? Was I supposed to show a video, or is that coming up?
Yes, yes, you are.
Okay, so let's go to the video, sorry. So thank you, Anthony, and my apologies. If I'd followed the script, it would be a lot easier. Great video. Thank you, Stephanie, for putting that together. I did want to also mention that on the 16th, you'll hear about those ADA compliant websites. I shared at the very, very beginning of, before we started the recording and being on. Because it is considered a public access, there are certain guidelines. And Kim Maybon is going to actually give a snapshot of what she's done for our Chamber website and showing you some simple things that can be done. And then we're going to host a webinar later on in the coming weeks to allow you all to learn. We've never known a government agency that doesn't want to go ahead and feel like they're important. So they'll be out finding you. We're helping to, we're hoping to help you be compliant. And it will be able to attract and support additional people that need these things to be taken care of. People that are colorblind or the people that need assistance. And Kim will go through all of those things. So it's a great, great event that's going to happen on Friday as well. I just wanted to make sure that if you could register now and use that promo code INNOVATION, that'll get you the best discounting. Our Chamber is truly focused on reopening the community. And to reopen in time, the time to reopen is the topic for Karen Spiegel. She is our county supervisor. She's actually Chair of the Board of Supervisors. And it's been several years since we've had a representative from Corona that serves as a board supervisor. So we're very honored to have her be here. It will be on May 21st. We encourage you to get your tickets now. It will be at the IHOP. It will be outdoors. There will be a virtual option as well. And then we have a great partnership, as you know, with the City of Corona. And you've heard Jim's share a lot. Well, on June 25th, we're actually going to expand that knowledge of what's going on. We're open for business, and our mayor, Jackie Casillas, will be doing the business version of the state of the city. And that will be on Friday, June 25th, at 7 o'clock up at Eagle Glen inside, because by then, the governor will have lifted all of the regulations and allow us to do that. And lastly, what I'd like to share is that on July 22nd, we have partnered with three other chambers from Brea, Yorba Linda, and the Chino Valley Chambers. And we're doing an economic forecast. Last year, we did this, and it was held in Orange County. This year, we're hosting it up at Eagle Glen. And there are sponsorship opportunities available, and it's going to be a tremendous event. So if you can, please go ahead and log on for that and put that on your calendar. Finally, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. I know that the past 14 months have been a big struggle with different business challenges and employment and trying to do the right thing. So many of you rose to the occasion, and you actually made Corona so much better. And we appreciate you being part of our Chamber. We appreciate you being part of the community. I'm available for any questions, either online now or offline. Have a fabulous day, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Bobby. Anthony, do we have any questions for Bobby?
There are no questions.
All right, then I'll turn it over to Don. You're muted, Don.
Donnie, unmute. You know, Marina's.
It's a lot harder to be heard when you're muted, you know?
Yeah, Marina was hoping she'd have a mute button for you, so.
Amen to that. Anyway, every week, you know, we get on these calls and we tout the benefits of being a member of this organization, the Corona Chamber of Commerce. And hopefully, you listen carefully to what our excellent CEO, Bobby Spiegel, just said. If you want a checklist of the kind of things that we do for the business community here in Corona, it's a valuable organization, and these calls are part of that benefit that you get. We want to empower you, our members. And if you're not, if you're on this call and you're not a member, please contact our membership expert, Robert Yanez. He can help you become a member right now, today. And if you know someone that should be a member who's not a member, please also give that name and that contact to Robert. The Chamber of Commerce throughout the history of this town has just been a vital part of the growth, the responsible growth, and the success of this community. And it continues to be so even more today. And we need everyone involved. It doesn't matter where your business is. We're a regional organization, and we are one of the most active Chamber of Commerce's politically in the state of California. So please, contact Robert if you're not a member. Or if you are a member, contact Robert. I mean, or if you want to be a member yourself, contact Robert. We have incentives for joining and for referring, and we make a big impact. And we need everyone to be on board the train. So please consider membership now. Kim, back to you.
Thank you. And we do need to, regarding the code for the Good Morning Corona pricing, innovation is a code for to get member pricing. If you're already a member, make sure you use promo code CHAMBER, and you'll get early bird pricing today. All right. And at this time, I get to introduce our legislative advocate, Jeff Gibson. Jeff keeps a pulse on what's happening in Sacramento and Washington DC, allowing us to act timely on projects and initiatives that help make a difference in shaping our community. His knowledge of complex political issues and the great relationships he's built ensure the Corona Chamber has all the tools to be effective on behalf of the business community. Please help me welcome Jeff Gibson to share a legislative update.
Hey, guys. So the march of good news keeps coming from Sacramento. It's a little embarrassing how much they love job creators and employment opportunities that help people build careers and families and enterprise. And but we helped sort through all of that great news and to find the ways that we could be doing better. And today, we have found a wonderful piece of legislation that would eliminate the ability of distribution centers to operate in the state of California. As you know, a record number of Californians are using goods that come directly from distribution centers that are operated by Amazon or other large companies. These centers have been largely built. Jeff, I can't, excuse me. I just saw in the chat, somebody already moved to oppose the bill. So AB 1546 would eliminate the ability of, it's called a good neighbor policy, just like any good bill. It would be difficult to pass the bill by saying wants to eliminate 100,000 jobs in the state of California. So we came up with a bill called the Good Neighbor Policy that would eliminate the ability of distribution centers to be placed anywhere in the state of California that are within 1,000 yards of homes in any direction. Now, the problem comes in that current state regulations encourage the development of distribution centers near highways. I think all of us on this call are familiar that distribution centers involve trucks. Trucks should not be on residential roads. So therefore, you have existing state policy saying, put them near highways, put them at the edge of urban centers, and on and on and on. And so this is not a joke bill, though. This is a bill that's sponsored by the Majority Leader in the State Assembly, Eloise Reyes, a Democrat from San Bernardino. And while it doesn't directly affect a lot of what we do here in Corona, because as a chamber, as a city, as a community, we have worked for years not to become a distribution center as much as we have worked to become a smart manufacturing center and that you, that because of where we are in the urban grid of Southern California. And so, but it will affect us if we are, if the distribution center is attached to manufacturing. And so now you can't be sighted within 1,000 yards, basically three quarters of a mile of any home or any location where someone is registered to vote. So if you're at a business and you're registered to vote, you're obviously claiming that as a residence. So very, very difficult to see how you're going to be able to rebuild the manufacturing base in the state of California if this is allowed. So not to step on Kim's lead on this, but apparently in the chat space, we already have a motion and a second.
Before we go to a vote, Anthony, are there any questions for Jeff?
There are no questions.
I stunned them into silence.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, to oppose the bill from Jeff, and a second from Marty. At this time, I would, okay, sorry. Is there any further discussion on this before we vote? Okay, seeing there's no further discussion, all those in favor of opposing, please say yes.
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 All those opposed to our motion opposing this bill, please say nay. Are there any abstaining? Okay, this motion carries, and the Corona Chamber will go on record of opposing the.
AB 1546.
It left the screen.
Not a problem. Have a good week, everybody.
All right, again, thank you, Jeff, for guiding the Corona Chamber and our membership in these legislative issues. Donnie?
Thanks, Kim. Once again, we would like to thank today's sponsor, Creative by Design. Creative by Design's mission is to give outstanding visual communications and marketing products to its customers and clients. They are very creative while still being cost-effective. They strive to provide business owners with the competitive edge in the marketplace. So please, for all your needs, contact Creative by Design. To learn more, go on your computer, creativbydesign.net. Kim, back to you.
Thank you, Donnie.
Kim, before you do that, Anthony, will you go back and put up the two slides? So Richard Roth.
You are muted.
Yikes. Okay. So we have Richard Roth, who's our Senator. And then if you go to the next slide, Sabrina Cervantes. You'll get this in the email, but we do want you to communicate with them and let you, let them know how you feel about that issue that we just brought up. And every week we're going to put these up so that you have them. We send a letter, we communicate with the offices, but it's really important for the business community. Individually, if you feel compelled to do so, is to connect with them and let them know when they hear your voice and they hear our voice. It's a two punch type of a thing and it's a good thing for them to know. This is whether we oppose or whether we're in favor of. They need to hear from us. Kim, back to you.
Thank you, Bobby. If you would like to sponsor a future business briefing, please contact the chamber and register now to join us for next Wednesday's call for more advocacy news. Thank you for everyone that attended today and our meeting is now adjourned.
Happy birthday, Jim Steiner.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Happy birthday, Jim.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Jim.
Thanks, Wesley.